Educating, Informing, Serving. FEC TV, Keeping Government Honest.
This is an emergency select board meeting that I called this morning at 3:05, I guess, on Monday, June 23. The purpose of the meeting is to understand the agreement with Tyon Bond that I think most of us did not understand. And so, as I understand it, is that this agreement, there are conditions in there that I was not aware of. The funding is not available, and I'm not even sure who's to charge for the committee. So, I don't know how we proceed here, but I know that I did not ask Bill to sign this contract as a select board. And I know John was in the office this morning, and he feels the same way, and I don't know how the other one would feel, but how do you have a contract when there's no money? And it was supposed to be $26,000, now it's at the $40,000. So, I'm very confused. And maybe somebody on the board can enlighten us, or we just decide not to sign the contract and have Tyon Bond and the committee come in and give us the same report that the next regular meeting will already set.
Joe, could you tell us about how the concerns... There's a little have a contact...
Okay.
Why, yeah. Just to understand where you got the impression that we didn't understand the agreement with Tyon Bond and what conditions existed that you could not ask Bill to sign it? So, we'll know a little clarifying for you.
Well, first is the amount of money. Secondly, is that I understand that town, it has to be a totally separate system if that's necessary. According to the agreement, or stuff that I've read here, that we can't use the Village Park site because we can't... doing work doesn't work. There's no funding available.
Did you just point out to us, Andy, do you remember where you're finding these? Because I thought I'd read the agreement several times, and I'm just not recalling where you see...
Well, Bill, maybe you can help me out, because... I highlighted in the agreement that I sent to you, the first thing that I have is on page one, it's in orange in what I printed out for you. Do you see it?
This is what you printed out for us.
There's this... No, no, I'm talking about the agreement. You don't have any reading capacity?
There's nothing in the orange.
All right, all right. I'll tell you what's in the orange. The very... the second paragraph, the first sentence. We understand the first step forward is an application for the EPA program which is due July 1st. And, but, that is not made a condition of us signing this agreement, that we get that application is granted to us. There is no money in this whole thing. We have no idea where any money's coming from, except that it might come from the state. We have no idea when, we have no idea how, we don't even know if we're going to get it. It's not guaranteed, and I don't know of any grant of money that allow you to begin work at all and expect to be paid for the work that you begin until the agreement is executed. So, the very first thing is this agreement has to be conditioned upon us getting the money. The second problem is...
Oh, it's not quite clear.
Yeah.
No, so, I'm going to share my experiences in 2001, when we did not have a wish vote committee, we just went for basically activist committee. And we hired Tyon Bond, we met with, I guess it was the same woman, Lynette, I think she was there at the same time. And we had all the funding and everything else in place before we accepted or signed any agreement whatsoever. And I just assumed that the committee had all this funding in place. Oh.
So, could I just add up for a moment?
Well, you want me to go through this agreement, or...
Yeah. While we're on Joe's point, you mind...
Well, I have more on that same point. Mark Johnson, Mark Johnson, yes?
That is my point, thank you. Joe, some of the questions that... first of all, I want to say that I think it's great these questions are coming up. It's all going to serve to make a better agreement and fuller understanding of what's going on. So, I'm very supportive of this process. The question I have is, because some of these questions are better answered by Matt, who's the chair of the water commission, and/or Aaron, Lynette, participating in such a meeting, would you help me understand why we're scheduling this as an emergency meeting instead of a special meeting, where we could have allowed time for them to be available and go through these questions with us?
Are we going to get to the point here, or are we going to screw around with questions?
I...
No, I can answer that question. I can answer that question. The reason we're doing this as an emergency meeting is because you guys want this done now. That's why we're having an emergency meeting. That's the only reason.
And the only reason why is to make sure that we cancel this, don't sign this agreement until we can have a meeting with Tyon Bond, with whoever the chair is, and the committee to understand what fully what's going to happen. Because it is the 23rd of June, July 1st is only a few days away, and we approved this meeting on Monday, and so we have to disapprove of it now, and we can't do that without a meeting. And that will be the whole purpose of the meeting here today.
Okay, I just want to, I just want to say that I think we need to dial back our motion a little bit. We need to have a meeting that is constructive, where we can talk to each other and arrive at an understanding, not having conflict and yelling at each other. I think that would be the... So, I respectfully ask that we can support ourselves that way in this meeting.
I will be happy to do that if we can follow the train of thought instead of going off on questions that are not even relevant to the chain of thought. That's all I'm going to say.
I beg to differ, it is completely relevant for the Select Board member to ask why an emergency meeting was called, but an emergency meeting is an exception to the regular and special meeting. There needs to be a good reason. There are two conditions, one, that it has a time element, and two, that it requires the committee's attention. My question, and I'll say it again for the recording, is if we had called a special meeting and allowed 24 hours for key people to be available to speak to our questions, we might have had a more productive meeting.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I would like you guys to make a motion that whether or not this emergency meeting, we can either end the meeting right now or do something else.
No, look, I called this emergency meeting because I felt it was necessary to... We said the motion was made at the Monday meeting, and Bill, her terms, on behalf of Support Sunday Group. Okay? That's the only reason why for this meeting is. I would suggest that we have a motion so that we do not sign this meeting, and either at a regular meeting or at a special meeting, bring in Tyon Bond, bring in the entire committee, so that we can have a full discussion about this whole thing. My opinion, it's been terribly bad handled, we have not been fully averse about this whole thing in the meeting. Partly it's my fault, maybe I didn't understand it. I felt that it was only $26,000, and if you think back a couple of meetings, Ken said, well, we were going to get the money from him, and I said to Ken, there's not a common because the $26,000 we take out of the surplus and once we get the funding, we'll replace it. Nobody ever mentioned the $40,000 or any of the other conditions that are in here. And I'm really one of those struck by this conditions. I'd like to have a motion to make sure that Bill doesn't sign it, and then we can have a special meeting or another meeting when Tyon Bond and the committee is available to the meeting. That is my only verdict.
I move we have a special meeting.
No, no, first we have to, the first we have to do, if it doesn't want to build sign, is we have to have a motion that we do not sign immediately. That's number one.
Okay, do you mind if I combine it?
No, it's a two second meeting, but...
Okay.
A motion.
But then will I be able to make my second?
You can always make a motion, because then we can be in the first one first.
All right. I move that under the circumstances, we do not sign this Tyon Bond Engineering Study Agreement that we can sign on Friday.
Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Okay, Bill?
I want to know, under what conditions?
Nothing but what condition?
This motion is based on, under the circumstances, what are the circumstances? I don't know the circumstances.
Oh, okay, that would be probably fair. If the agreement is, price agreement and the funding is not available.
If I would, since it's the motion that I'm making, I would say, because the Select Board is not clear about the condition and the funding. Because I think that's a more accurate reflection, we are not clear about it.
Well, that's okay, but it's not, we do not have the funding period, we signed the agreement without funds.
Are we in destruction mode about the motion? We think I'm happy to respond to that and discuss...
Yeah, we can.
Okay, so, with respect to the funding and the application, they go hand in hand, and they are a bit of chicken and egg situation. In other words, the application for the engineering study requires an engineering study proposal, and it was our understanding that that engineering study proposal had to be signed and go along with the application for funding. If you look at the application, you can see that the Select Board can easily fill out page one, but when it comes to filling out page two and page three and page four, it's the engineer who, agreement we have signed, who helps guide the commission through the process of applying for this grant due on July. So, the engineering study agreement and the engineering study planning, funding, the application go hand in hand. Now, it was not our understanding that we could submit a draft of the Engineering Services Agreement along with the application for funding. It was our understanding that we had to be signed, but it now does not have to be signed. We received a note from Lynette today saying that we can accept a draft of an engineering study agreement along with the application. So, therefore, Joe, I really think that we can say we are not clear about it, and we can then make a motion to have a special meeting where we can clarify.
That's not what they said in their email this afternoon.
Yeah.
They said they don't know what to do about what we're complaining about. They have no idea.
I bet.
I have it right here from Mark Johnson, Lynette, and Tom. Any chance that you could chime in on the timing of executing the ESA in relation to the funding applications? I assume the ability to pay for the engineering is contingent on the successful application. How do they address that? They haven't answered that question, and Lynette hasn't answered that email.
That's even more of a reason to have a special meeting and invite Lynette to speak.
To this, nobody is questioning the special meeting. That's not the motion on the floor. The motion on the floor is to stop the signing. That's, if you want to have a special meeting, that's another motion.
I'm thinking of a motion, Joe, I'm living that motion. I'm not trying to live with the proposal is inaccurate, the proposal that's not... We just don't... I would prefer that we just say, let's not sign the agreement until we have a special meeting.
No, and it has to be a reason why we're not signing it.
Okay. Let's go through, I'll make a motion again. I move that we do not sign Tyon Bond Engineering Services Agreement because we need further clarification about the funding.
And the agreement?
And the agreement.
I agree with that.
So, do we have a second?
I'll turn to that. Do we have any other discussion on this? Not all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And now I move that we have a special, set up a special meeting, and that needs to take place before Friday. We only need 24-hour notice for a special meeting, and that we schedule it in such a way that Matt, Aaron, and/or Lynette can attend the meeting and shed light on this subject to the Select Board.
I'm not available this week, sorry, I have other commitments, so, and I think that's, I'd rather see us have a special meeting sometime next week, letting me know officially that Tyon Bond, Matt, and all of the others can be here, available to have this special.
I'm kind of that, Joe. The deadline for the application is July 1st, so I think we just need to be aware of that because if we miss the July 1st deadline, we will not be eligible for funding.
Without that?
Yes.
Doesn't say anything, I haven't seen that anywhere.
Okay.
Except that...
Give you a reminder, the proposal for engineering services, page one, paragraph two. We understand that the first step forward is an application to the Engineering Bank Advance Program, which is Lynette's program, which is due July.
That's from Aaron Moore, not from Lynette.
Okay, I'm sure I have emails from Lynette, take, thank, thank you. You said this, I'm almost out with it in minutes to the meeting. July 1st has always been the deadline for application for it though. In our minutes, July, June 7th, 2021, Matt Siano announced that the commission subcommittee owes to the commission to hire Tyon Bond to do feasibility study. Matt stated the feasibility study will be complete and report that by July. I think it is safe to say that the engineering, the engineering application for the engineering planning study is due on July 1, and it will be you and us as the Select Board to have the meeting prior to the special meeting, so that we can meet that deadline. I totally understand, Joe, that you're not available this week. I wasn't really available this afternoon either, but, I mean, we got our funding.
I'd like to get a clarification from Lynette, whether or not this is, that it is fact that if the application is not submitted by July 1, we're moving to the end of the year.
Okay.
I have not seen any clarification of that.
Okay. So, I asked the motion pending clarification from Lynette that the due date is July 1?
Yes.
Would that be acceptable?
When are you going to, when are you going to call the meeting?
Well, then we can, then we have a, once we know that it's not necessary, we don't have to have a special meeting.
Okay.
If it's necessary, then we have, yeah, what is July 1, what date is July 1?
July, July 1st, next Wednesday.
Okay, so we could have a meeting next evening, next Monday, would be nice.
Yeah.
And we can have a discussion meeting on Monday at 5:00.
Okay. We are, so. I'm going to now modify my motion to say, I move that we have a special meeting pending confirmation from Lynette that the engineering planning study application is due on July 1.
Can you just slow down a second?
A little slow.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, we can't pass by.
Due July 1, and...
And it's scheduled in such a way that Matt, Aaron, and/or Lynette can participate.
And Tyon Bond?
Aaron is time bond.
Does anybody else have to be there besides, and the committee should be, the full committee should be there.
We can invite the full commission, I think. I have a question.
Can you, that, can that motion also set the date?
Monday?
Yeah.
I guess it is?
Okay.
Well, let's see, wait, let's look at your ability, let's do it on Monday, and we should hear back, and then prior to Thursday, which is tomorrow, because we have to post the agenda, prior, if they are available on Monday, they might not want to be available on Monday.
So, for a special meeting, we have 24-hour notice required?
I understand that, but we don't work on weekends.
I'm sorry?
I said Bill doesn't work on weekends.
Oh, right, okay, got it.
And I'm not here Friday. I'm gone Friday, I'm not, just not here, I'm gone. I'm in Boston.
You have to have it by 3:00, if we can't do it by 3:00, I don't know.
Set a special meeting for 6:00 on Monday. I think you just should set the meeting for 6:00 on Monday and tell them they got to be here, or, you know, if it's important to them, they'll be here, if it's not important to them, they won't.
So, I...
That's my opinion.
Well, I'm a little more flexible, I think it should set the meeting at 6:00, but if there's, if there's circumstances where either, well, either Tyon Bond or Lynette can't be here, and then do it at 4:30 or something of that nature, then I think you need to consider...
Okay, then I wouldn't do it in time at all, because if you tell the public a time, that's the time.
So, then Monday, we'll have a special meeting on Monday, time to be announced, and it has to be, you have to be finalized by end of working Thursday.
And that sounds, I go along with that as an amendment to the motion I made. I don't know if we have a second, though.
No, we didn't, yeah. Do we have any discussion, do you have any thoughts surrounding?
Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
I agree with Suzanne, I support her motion. I would hate for us to miss the July 1 deadline and lose funding just because we weren't sure, so I'd rather move forward and get it settled in time.
But who will make the clarification, whether or not July deadline is, is, that's installed?
I'm willing to call Lynette, right, if you ask, if you don't want to do it.
Well, that would be fine, maybe we don't. Is that, I mean, because we don't, we don't have to do that, then we don't have to have a special meeting.
I'd like to be clear on a couple of things. We have the agreement or the proposal for time bond, that's one thing. I understand that, and there's some questions that came up. The other thing that's very critical is the application for the funding has to be filled out, you need the information from Tyon Bond Engineering Study, when they're particulars, you need to fill in that application, and it's up to this board to do that application. Just want to be clear, very clear, you understand that? And the other thing that's confusing is to vote for the design on July 1st. So, they kind of wait the July 1st to, to, to Tyon Bond, but it's critical to have this application in on July 1st for the funding to be drawn.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Also, not only does the application be done, but the ESA has to be done, and the, I, it's up to you guys, but I don't recommend you signing any contract without the funds.
Well, I would, I think so.
So, if you're going to have this ESA for July 1st, they have to put a condition in the ESA that protects you from signing an agreement in green to pay $43,600 when you don't have any money.
I understand that, we're on a wait list if that application goes through, we're going. Is that true? That's what I read.
I want, I wouldn't, so, if you're on a waitlist, are you going to then guarantee somebody is going to pay $43,000 because this guy over here says you're on a waitlist?
I think so.
Okay, I think we probably, I think we probably are, but, but you're not, I don't want the town to sign an agreement for $43,000 and find out, like, a lot of the things the state does, oops, we don't have the money.
Well, I think that's a very good suggestion, granted that state, and she goes through all the rules to get to the right, correct, and opinion on it.
Yeah.
I'm also on my way to the floor.
Personally, I would not have to sign anything unless it's further guaranteed. The last thing that I would like to see the Select Board do, when the opportunity is set forth, and some other members can do it, is on, but as the chair, I would strongly urge that we would accept anything unless the money is 100% guaranteed, because if it's not, then we have a liability issue, and the money that has been out of service, and that's not what we intend for you to do.
I have another thing which I wanted to go through, and the point, everybody here is aware that the woods above Howland are not available, the only thing available that is, by deduction, is maybe the town park and Alpine, everybody knows that, there's only two places available.
We're not sure, and again, since the committee is not here, did anybody get a written approval from the Little Foundation to use that site? I don't know, I mean, without their approval, we can't even use the site. I can only tell you that Stan Mack and I, I went to meet with Liz Batakowski prior to the committee, or commission being formed, she had no knowledge of any usage of any site in the past, who brought her up for dating, and she signed some kind of a letter that they would consider it, but she didn't get any final approval. I don't know where that letter is, it might be in pot, but she can say Stan and I, or in a letter that she, that, yes, to Howland Field and the, the on-site would be available to the town. There was no negotiation in part of money flow, or whether it can be used or not, and I think that needs to be clarified as well.
Right, Paul Donald does have a copy of that letter, and he, I think that the identification and qualification of the site are all part of the engineering study, as quoted by Tyon Bond.
So, you're saying that they have agreed to it?
I don't recall what was in the content of that letter, I just, I know that per Joe's request, we can't get a copy of that letter.
Yeah, if I remember the letter, the letter did not give approval, the letter said that they had no objection to, you know, talking about it or learning more about the issue, as I remember it. I could recall.
But it's, do you also agree, Joe, it's not a prerequisite for us to sign the engineering study application?
No, no, it's not, and these are the loose ends that I think we need to have, because if we have an engineering study and the only site that's going to work is that site, and we can't use it, then, then, what do we do with that? I mean, I think we have to have insurance from the Little Foundation, or anybody else in that matter, that if, if it went, study is approved, and it private goes forward, that they will allow, or whoever owns it will allow us to use it, and I think that's important.
It is, it is.
And if there is, there is something here, I think, what do you think?
It's on task number four, page two. It's on test number four, page two. Test number, test number 10, number four, um, page two, recommended alternative, develop, I'm sorry, test three development alternatives.
But it also says on, on four, or page one, we know that per tests are proposed on the chosen site, this is fine for verified infiltration rates based on soil description for DEC, no longer be launched on per tests because the chemical loading rates can be sealed up. But that means, that says that maybe the town park isn't available for a site, I don't know.
Yeah.
And I, I think we need to have Taiyuan coming, and, and I think we need to have a agreement or some understanding, if the sites don't work, what do we do?
As you can see, the proposal is broken down into parts where you have a breakdown 30%, 60%, and then maybe 90%. And so even in the proposal, as it's presented by Taiyuan, there are go, no, no steps, and all you pay for is the work that has been done to date. If there comes to a tough point where there are no sites available, then there's no place for them.
Okay, but, but Sue, I'll use this as an example, would you hire an architect and an engineer to build your house if you don't have the lot? I mean, you know, you know, when I, yes, I understand that it's, it's scapegoats here, but you're still spending money, and you're not really sure, I understand that the building part, part of it, because if they don't accept the, the per test, then it's, it's a no-go. But we own that, we control that piece of property. Obviously, we don't have to vote for it, but I mean, we can, we can move forward, but when you have, with the foundation, unless they give us a verbal pay and say, yes, if the study goes through, the people, yes, we can use it, and we can use it in no cost or $5,000, or whatever the case might be, without that, you have no other sites. And they also own the Howland Field site, so, you know, they're the key, they're the key people here, and they have to at least give us an indication that they have no objection to doing.
So are you studying that as another prerequisite?
I would, personally, as the meeting, I'm just one person, but that's, that's how I would get it.
I don't really think we need to go back, we have a motion on the floor, that's all the special meeting, and to invite the people who are key to our understanding as a select board on the path forward. What if we act on that, get the people here, and provide a forum to ask these questions? I mean, we could definitely invite Bob Donald to the special meeting.
Well, the reason why I'm bringing that up is I think he should be included in that special meeting.
Yeah, let's do that.
Or at least let us send a letter that I got no objection, because we know.
Or not, that they agree to the study, whatever, but we could definitely invite them to the special meeting. I have, I'll invite Lynette to do it.
Do we have any, any discussion? So all in favor of the motion, you have a question?
Your motion, yeah.
Okay, so, long as you speak your motion.
Suzanne moved that we have a special meeting pending the info from Lynette, that it is due on July 1st, and scheduled, so Matt, Aaron, Lynette, and now Bob Donald.
Representative.
From the foundation, can participate. The meeting will be on Monday, time to be set by Thursday afternoon, okay?
And the only, the only, uh, the only difference here, I would make, is for Lynette, we might not need Aaron and Lynette here, we could, depending on scheduling.
Yeah, I'm gonna say it's Bob Donald. Bob can make it.
Well, except that you gotta know, Aaron can't answer questions that Lynette has to answer, so, that's all I'm saying.
Well, if, if, if we have a situation where one or the other can't answer the question, then I think both have to be, I think realized.
Well, Aaron can't tell us that the thing is due eight, July 1st, he could tell us that Lynn said it was due July 1st.
We're gonna know about July 1st deadline in just a little while.
Okay, and there's all sorts of things that are coming from the state that Aaron doesn't answer, they're the funders, Aaron's the engineer, so I, I think they both should be here. If they can't be here, you guys, then you, your meeting can be held, but it, just realize that you might not have everything you want, that's all.
Well, that's true.
As long as we typically, the meeting time is flexible, so that everyone is available to attend on Monday, then that would be fine, we'll work that out.
That works with me.
We gotta work that out.
If we have any other discussion, so all in favor of the motion to have a special meeting, I don't know many, but all the parties, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
You, you're an aye or a opposed, since Sue, Sue, are you an aye?
An aye.
I'm an aye, I am not opposed, I support.
Okay.
Would there be any other comment?
I have, I have another business, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I was going through the emails, and it looks like we have due on July 1st the agreement with the sheriff.
No, 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 you can't, this is an emergency meeting, no, you can't even talk about that.
Okay, talk about any contract that will.
No, you can't talk about that.
Well, we got the, the due dates.
Well, all those contracts were probably signed in August last year.
Yeah, no, it's okay, that'll be on the agenda on regular meetings.
Okay, it's on schedule.
All right, so the next meeting, the next regular meeting is July 6th, at 6:00 PM here, and it might be, it might be a special meeting on Monday, depending on, you know, a motion to adjourn, please?
I don't know.
Okay. Any discussion?
I would like to.
It works like that.